You want the bird in the recording or no?
So, I'll have to turn it off if you don't. Looks like you got fifty seconds John. I can turn it off if you want. You can wait for fifty seconds. Move you off. Selectmen's December twenty first, twenty twenty one meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is John Samia, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Don LeBeau.
Here.
Beth Cassavan.
Here.
Morris DiPaolo.
Here.
Teresa Flynn.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Kristen Lass.
Present.
Taylor Galucia.
Oh, here.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Senate Bill twenty four seventy five, signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, twenty twenty one, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section eighteen. This meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please be sure to press star six to mute your device. This meeting will not feature public comment, please wait. Well, there is no public comment. And finally, each vote taken in the meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. First item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move we approve.
Suck it.
Having movement seconded, a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I motion pests unanimously. Next item is announcements, reports, colleagues, any announcements or reports? Not seeing any. I have two quick ones. Christmas tree pickup will be on your regular scheduled pickup day on the weeks of January third through the seventh, and January tenth through the fourteenth. Please place only one real Christmas tree, free of snow and ice, and not frozen to the ground. They must be visible to the collection crew in place at the curb by seven AM. And the second announcement, we had approved the pay-as-you-throw program at our last meeting. So on December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, the Board of Selectmen authorized the disposal of one pay-as-you-throw trash bag for hospital for the period of December twenty seventh through December thirty first, twenty twenty one. Pay-as-you-throw customers will be allowed to place at the curb one plastic non-pay-as-you-throw bag up to thirty-five gallons. On your regularly scheduled collection day, there will be no delay in collections surrounding the Christmas and New Year's holidays. That is it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. DiPaolo.
If I might, I just wanted to note the passing of David Janino. He was an employee of the Water and Sewer Department. I don't know the exact days, but it's got to be around forty years. He passed away a couple of days ago. He was a lifelong resident of Shrewsbury. Another one of those people that John and I went to school with, but I started with him in the first grade. And so I've known him quite a long time, and he was quite the gentleman. And he's going to be missed, and I thought I had to acknowledge that our loss of him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo, and our condolences to you and his family and all of his friends. Go next item to Town Manager's Report, Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. Several updates for you this evening. I wanted to mainly update the residents watching that we have fully engaged within the start of the strategic planning process. Board of Selectmen members have engaged with the consultants. The project management team, which is a group of managers and other individuals from within the town staff. Then the expanded management team that includes division managers met with a consultant last Thursday. And finally, board and committee chairs met with the consultants, provide input later that day. So as we move into the new calendar year, residents will begin to receive information about the release of the National Community Survey. There'll be a lot more details associated with that, make residents aware and be ready to receive that and participate. And then after we're able to compile that information, as we near the end of winter, we'll begin to message the community about either virtual or in person or both public engagement opportunities into the strategic plan and Shrewsbury twenty thirty vision. So please, everyone, stay tuned to that. We're really excited, and we're off to a really strong start. And we'll start the first phase of the national, first phase of public participation through the National Community Survey in January. Earlier this week, Monday, yesterday, we returned to the hybrid operating model for town office-based employees. There's no impact to the public, although we may ask for your patience if things get a little bit busy at Town Hall as we are only at fifty percent staffing levels, and that is to preserve operations. Many of our offices have, you know, three or four employees, and one individual positive within that office could need. We would have to shutter the whole office, so we've gone back to A and B groups on a weekly basis rotation. And we'll stay in that model at least until the end of January, unless conditions merit staying there longer. And just a final reminder that town offices will close at noon on December twenty third. That's Thursday of this week, and reopen to the public for operations on Monday, December twenty seventh, at eight AM, our normal start time. If there's any questions, I can move into the COVID update.
Any questions? Please proceed.
This is an update since we met last week of only a week. It provides cumulative case numbers of four thousand three hundred and six positive COVID nineteen cases, which is an increase of a hundred and ninety over the course of the last seven days. We continue to report cases out to the public every Friday, and we'll be alerting individuals to the altered publication schedule when we send our release out this week due to the holidays. Unfortunately, Board members, there's been another COVID-indicated death since we last reported an update on deaths on eleven twenty-three. So that brings the total COVID-indicated deaths in town of town Shrewsbury residents to seventy-eight. So this is the graph since our first case of March of twenty twenty. You can see we're on a very serious and significant increase, just like most of the rest of the country, and definitely the rest of the Commonwealth are further detailed out with our weekly case count. You'll see a significant increase, obviously, from the November, the week of November twenty seventh through to the week of December fourth. And fortunately, there hasn't been a significant increase since that time, but we are seeing heavy caseloads on a daily basis. Unfortunately, that two-week positivity rate continues to climb. It is now up another half percent over by adding this most recent week into the two-week review. And those are significant indicators, obviously, of what we're seeing around us. We saw positive news that these vaccination numbers continue to increase, which is well documented, is your best bet. Very hard to avoid contacting COVID, but the vaccine is very effective in keeping symptoms very mild and definitely keeping you out of the hospital. We're up to eighty-six percent of eligible residents that have at least one dose, and seventy-five percent are considered fully vaccinated, with significant increases, almost two thousand with their first dose, and almost twelve hundred with the second dose and fully vaccinated since eleven twenty-three. Everyone over the age of five is now eligible, and individuals are encouraged to get their booster when they become eligible for that. Here's the details behind the data, or details behind the charts with our lowest level data with regards to age brackets. Very high levels of individuals that are fully vaccinated across the spectrum and growing in the five to eleven-year age group, which is great to see. And at the bottom of the screen, you'll see the breakout of cases in age groups of ten years. So asking residents to do everything that they can. There is a mask mandate that is in place for all town buildings and private businesses. Just ask everyone to wear their mask and cooperate with that and keep everyone safe. That's the end of the COVID update.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Any comments or questions? Not seeing any. Go on to next items on the agenda under meetings or any hearings. The next item is a, that will push out to the January eleventh meeting is a departmental update with the Council on Aging. So we'll move that from today to January eleventh, and we'll follow as we've done with the Police Department, Fire Department, and School Department, so we look forward to that early next year. Next item on the agenda is joint meeting with the Historical Commission for the presentation, the historic inventory. I believe we have Mr. Schwab with us, as well as Mrs. Howard, just by way of quick background, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwab. We'll be hearing about the historical inventory back at the special town meeting held in October of twenty nineteen. The town meeting members had approved Article Five to fund a survey of historical homes and properties. So this evening would be hearing about, about what they've done since that time. At this time, I will hand it over to Mr. Schwab. I think you mentioned Mrs. Howard will be presenting as well, and if they can introduce anyone else that's with them.
Yes, of course. Thank you so much, Mr. Samia, and to the rest of the members of the board for having us. I do have Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Matrano here with us as well from SSV Architects, who actually, Mr. Matrano is gonna present and share his screen, if that's all right. And I'm gonna let them take the lead on presenting a good portion of the presentation tonight. Ms. Howard and I will jump in for a bit as well. So is it all right if Mr. Matrano shares his screen to do that?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you.
Just a second here. Sorry, just having a permissions issue with my settings on my computer here.
So Joe's opening up his computer there. If I could give a quick introduction to the, to the project. We are an architectural and historic preservation firm in Charleston, Massachusetts, and we were engaged to do a historic resource survey by the town. I should also note, I am a resident of Shrewsbury, which is, which is why we pursued this project because of a personal and professional interest. So what we have here is a hundred and forty-some-odd houses, which we surveyed extensively in the town through a process, and I'll let Joe explain the process in which we did that. And then we met with the Historic Commission and reviewed these items and reviewed, you know, the value of this activity, of this exercise. And after we presented, I think we'll talk a little bit about what we can do with it and where we can go forward with this, with this survey. So Joe, do you want to take it and give a quick introduction on, or a quick overview of what we did?
Absolutely. So can everyone see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we've just prepared a little presentation here, kind of outlining the basic process and, and, you know, the next steps for this historic resources survey, wherein we collaborated with the Historical Commission to inventory over one hundred and forty properties, privately owned properties in the town of Shrewsbury. So the presentation can only, you know, show so much, and we do have limited time here. But I will show you this binder here, which has all of our inventory forms. Like I said, there's over a hundred and forty. And there's some other background in here. So this is something that we hold on to. But either way, we'll move on with the presentation here. So here, I've just outlined the, the goals from the, from the get-go. And they were to inventory document and research, like I said, private residences, and these were all residences in Shrewsbury that are of historical significance but have not yet been surveyed and entered into the Massachusetts Cultural Resource Information System, MACRS for short. This is run by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. There's actually two ways to access it. There's just the traditional inventory. There's also MACRS maps, which is a much newer system. And anyways, these, these forms are, all of these properties are historical, and as such, do have architectural significance, but are not yet inventoried with the state. And then the second goal was to develop preliminary plans for long-term protection of the resources, including measures to increase local interest in the town's historic heritage. And we will get to how we've done both of these things through the presentation. And please, if anyone has any questions as I'm going, please feel free to just stop me. So here, we've, we've taken the opportunity to map all of the properties that we inventoried. Fortunately, it's a function of Google. When you have an Excel spreadsheet, you can just import it. So this map is, you know, available as a link, but I just took a screenshot here and included it. So as you can see, a lot of them are concentrated towards the town center, a lot along Quinn-Sigamond as well. And yeah, so I said, just over one hundred and forty. It's actually specifically a hundred and forty-one. They do vary in their level of significance, and the construction dates range from the early eighteenth century all the way up to the turn of the twentieth century. And here's a few examples of the forms that we've prepared, and these are based on Mass Historic, Mass Historical Commission's standard for historical inventory forms for buildings. What we did, Jerry made a fillable PDF wherein he took, you know, a drive and in some cases, a walk around town, did a windshield survey of the properties, took photos, and then various members of the firm working with the Historical Commission wrote up architectural descriptions of the properties. The Historical Commission provided construction dates. And all of the, all of the details, including the photograph, location map, construction date, and original use, architectural style, which in some cases is a little bit of gray area, and the statement of the structure's condition. And in some cases, the historical narrative are all included on these forms. Each form is two pages long, at least some pages have, or some, some of the forms have more, rather. A little bit more about the inventory forms. There would, so they have been prepared. However, Mass Historic has very stringent requirements for getting these inventoried in MACRS. That is to say, you know, sending these to a state level and having them in a centralized location will require some additional work. And I've kind of, on this slide, just outlined the steps that will be required to get any of these properties accepted for listing in MACRS, which is something that we could do with these. It is, it is a feasible step forward, but it is by no means a necessary step. It would just be, you know, it's just, it's just one of many options going forward here. So first of all, Mass Historic only accepts Word documents. So we have fillable PDFs that would have to be converted to Word documents and typed with the proper formatting. They have a specific font size and fonts that they want used. A lot of the properties would require far more extensive research into their history, which a lot of them, as I've noted here, won't necessarily have all of that, all of the, you know, the necessary amount of detail available just because, you know, they are of historical significance, just, just in the fact that they were built in the eighteenth or nineteenth centuries. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they were well documented. So a lot, many of these a hundred and forty-one properties ultimately will not, will not necessarily be eligible for listing in MACRS. However, their architectural descriptions are still valuable, and we'll talk a little bit more on the following slides about what we can do with those. But that is, that's, that's not to say that, that a significant number of these properties with more research could be ultimately be entered into.
If I could just add there, Joe, so the value of MACRS, obviously, is to, is to put Shrewsbury on the map, sort of, they can just to highlight some of the, you know, historic buildings that we have in town, and so that anybody in the state or outside the state can see that as well. Obviously, not absolutely required. With these forms, we looked deeply at the architectural components, and we were able to, you know, date with relative accuracy, you know, the, the, when the houses were built. What would be needed would be historical information, like who lived there and what their role in the town was, et cetera.
Sorry, Joe, go ahead. And those aren't, I mean, those aren't the only detail. You know, some, some properties might have an interesting role in, you know, local legend. Yeah, that's, that's something that we come across. Or they might be significant historically just based on who the builder was, if it wasn't necessarily the, you know, the, the person who lived there, but was instead an architect or, or, you know, some other sort of building professional. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of ways that we could find history on the structures. And there's a lot of resources that we can tap into. But once again, it's worth reiterating that, that not all of the properties will have, will have the information. Thirdly, some of the photographs that were taken via windshield survey, as per the, the initial RFQ, will need to be retaken to meet, to meet MHC's standards. And then they'd have to be printed, once again, for MHC's requirements. And then the forms themselves would have to be printed and submitted to MHC. So those are just the steps to get them listed on MACRS. But there are other ways to move forward with the, with the research and ways to utilize the information that we've been able to uncover through this process. First of all, is a marker or a program for historic markers on these homes and on other, on other historic structures in town. A lot of towns in Massachusetts have a program for this, a municipally-run program. Sometimes historical societies run these, but typically, it's a historical commission. Sometimes it's also a collaboration between the two. These are very common throughout the Commonwealth, just because it's such a historic state. And these plaques typically list the property's construction date and historic name at the very minimum. Sometimes they will have a little bit of verbiage, but, but most commonly, they have the dating. So some municipalities, like Maynard, have a budget specifically for production of the signs. It's overseen by the Historical Commission, who orders them and coordinates their fabrication. So basically, the owners of the homes apply to the Historical Commission to get a plaque. The Historical Commission has a budget for that, will either approve or deny it. And if they're approved, will take care of getting the sign made for, for the owner to put up on the front of their house. In other municipalities, like Concord and Weston, the town doesn't, doesn't necessarily fund the signs fabrication. The property owners are responsible for the expense, but the Historical Commission still oversees, makes, makes decisions about whether the house is historically significant, and also helps by coordinating the design and verbiage used on the, on the markers. So this might be a good option for Shrewsbury to kind of create consistency and increase visibility of the town's historic landscape, which is, is very significant. And there's, there's a lot to unpack. Another, another option moving forward is making some proposed changes to town bylaw. Historic resources are often crucial aspects of a community's architectural landscape. In this case, in Shrewsbury, like I said, ma- many of the historic structures are private residences. And a surefire way to make sure that those resources are protected is by incorporating preservation measures into bylaw, which could include establishing an additional historic district or historic districts. Another option is establishing a program for scenic roadways in areas with a higher concentration of historic resources. So my hometown, North Attleboro, just down in the border with Rhode Island, there, we just recently established a program for scenic roadways, and it's been a great way to increase visibility of historic structures and also to increase the visibility of natural resources in town, kind of areas of natural beauty. So, so that's an added benefit of that. And another option is to introduce some form of demolition bylaw. The delays that come along with these bylaws range from town to town. Six months is typically at the lower end of the range. It can go lower, sometimes, some towns have three, but six is more common. So once again, to talk about North Attleboro, they specify a six-month demolition delay, which may serve as an ideal model for Shrewsbury going forward. And then finally, another, another feasible option for moving forward with this project is to develop some sort of tour, either a self-guided walking tour, or given the size of the town and the kind of spread of the structures, a driving tour might be more appropriate. The information could readily be compiled into a pamphlet or even like a website. And people could guide themselves on a, on a tour of the town's historic resources. Many options exist. It might be excessive to include all hundred and forty properties, especially if you go the pamphlet route and not the website route. But some of the more notable ones could be included, along with other properties that are, that were already listed on the National and State Registers, but weren't necessarily inventoried as part of this project because of the previous research. So a good example of that is Artavis Ward House. And with that, that's, that's SSV's contribution to the presentation. Paul had prepared a couple of slides. So Paul, would you like to talk about, about the Historical Commission's plans for the next steps?
Sure thing, and I'll try to do that as brief as possible. So we've got two pieces. I'm actually gonna let Aaron talk. So we've got two pieces. I'm actually gonna let Aaron talk quickly about this piece and then I'll discuss the next one.
Hello, uh, first we have a overview of the different historical groups in town, since this is often a source of confusion. Um, so we thought we would clarify, clarify that first for um people who are uh watching or listening at home. Um, so first we have the Historical Society and that is a private group, community group. Um, it's founded over a hundred years ago, I believe. And they have archives of historical papers and artifacts at their location um in the center of town. And their mission is to um promote public interest in the history of the town. They work with school groups. Um, they uh, they work on, um, they have their own funding and they um, they sometimes uh make contributions to historical um, uh, to funding historical initiatives. Um, then we have the Historic District Commission, which is part of the town government. It's appointed by the selectmen. And um that, they are responsible for what I think most of us would think of as the heart of the town center. The area around the common, the cemetery, this, the congregational church, uh, the library, uh, the summer house. So they work on um keeping up the uh nice New England character of that district and um maintaining uh the appropriate the um maintaining the character of it, um determining appropriateness to any changes. And then there's us, the Historical Commission. We're also part of the town, also appointed by the um selectmen and we're responsible townwide for um things like this historical inventory, um for um, for doing research, for um coordinating with um the departments in town government, um with the selectmen, with anybody else that um that uh may um be working on something that uh affects uh that overlaps with historical preservation and and um concerns about that. Um, and ultimately, we want to ensure the best stewardship of our town's wonderful legacy um of historical significance in the Commonwealth. And I'll hand things over to Paul.
All right, just one quick note, Aaron. We're actually appointed by um the town manager and then.
Approved by the selectmen, yes. Sorry, I misspoke there.
No, I understood what you were saying. The last piece just comes to now the, the commission's suggestions around um moving forward based on everything that we've gotten from SSV um as a result of the inventory. Uh, so getting our feedback and then in talking this over with the, the commission, we felt like there were three main elements that uh made sense to, to prioritize in the, in the future. Um, and it by no means is a, a list chiseled in stone. Um, it is really our recommendations. Um, first we felt would be important to uh work to create a system of collaboration with other um pieces of town government, the Board of Selectmen, which this obviously starts with our meeting tonight, um town manager, planning board, et cetera, so that we can work together effectively to um attempt to preserve the historical integrity and character of the town. Um, a, a second piece uh involves working to add some historic preservation language um to the town's bylaw. Um, there is no such language in there currently. Um, in looking at town center bylaws across the state, um generally that is included within that. Um, so we felt that it may um add a component to that that could be beneficial for the town. Um, lastly is to work with the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager's Office to um draft and propose a preservation bylaw. Um, I say that very loosely because I understand the history with preservation bylaw and what folks automatically tend to associate that with. Um, we're not necessarily looking to jump right into a, a demo bylaw. Um, but would like to work with the board to explore something that uh would be beneficial to the town and also prioritize preservation as best we can. I think that's all we've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DePaul.
Um, if, if no one else does, I have, I have a few. Um, so um first, let me thank you for um doing this work. Um, I looked through all of the properties in the notebook. Um, and the architectural descriptions were, were really complete and I'm sure that must have taken some time. Um, so I guess my first question is, recording something in um MACRIS i- is what? Just getting it into a central repository?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with um the state historic register or the federal government?
Well, go ahead, Joe. You, you, you know MACRIS well.
Yes, um, so properties that are inventoried on, on MACRIS aren't necessarily on the state register. Um, it is, like you said, it's, it's just kind of a central location uh for, for people who are interested in doing research. Um, where they can easily find information about those properties. Um, however, all, all properties that are on the state register are in MACRIS. Not all properties in MACRIS are on the state register.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I might, unless somebody has some other questions. Um, I, I'm curious um why these forty um were chosen um as historically significant. Um, because there's about three hundred and sixteen houses um through the assesses um information that were built from seventeen hundred to nineteen hundred. So how, how did it get narrowed down to these one hundred and forty?
I'll, I'll, I'll leave that one to you.
So I, I think we first started with a variety of uh work that had been done previously by the Historic Commission, um by the Historic Preservation Committee prior to that. Um, and merged various lists together that we had. Um, and that was our kind of recommended list for SSV to start looking at. Um, it didn't necessarily end up being every property that was on that list that ended up um being assessed in the inventory, but that was our kind of best uh, in a sense, best guess as to the ones that we felt um would show some promise in having significance.
Sure. Um, I guess my question is, um I know there's more work to be done on, on the historic research, on the historic narrative, but are most of these on here primarily because of the architectural um features on it to, to tie it into the, into the times? Like good examples of architecture of the times?
Yeah, that, that's it. Well, Paul, go ahead. You can answer that, but I, I, I think that's a good assessment of it. Um, you know, truth be told, we did find a few along the process and we maybe, we wanted to set up a system which others could be easily added. Uh, and again, uh, we'd actually be doing that as they come along or as new things are developed or new things are discovered. Uh, but it was more to set up a system uh so that if we found buildings that may not have a lot of architectural significance, but have suddenly have, we find out it has a lot of historical significance, we would add them to the uh, to the, to the list.
So just one last question. Yep. So is the next step um beyond the, the ones that you mentioned, Paul? Um, to really start looking at these properties and, and do the historic to see if there is any historic information on these or whatever reason, somebody significant lives there or something like that?
It is, and, and you have some leads on some of that already. So essentially that becomes the work now of the commission. Um, SSV has helped us define what that process is and what it looks like. Um, so I, I think we feel like we are, are pretty comfortable with that on taking the reins over on that piece of it moving forward. Um, we have established some norms on the commit, the commission to help make that work happen, um and are setting some, I think reasonable and achievable goals. Um, to research the history of the X number of properties e- each year to get them added into, to MACRIS in kind of a systematic way.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation. Um, and also the explanation between our three different historical commissions, because I know that's confusing. Um, I have to write it down and then refer back to it. Um, my question is around where I can view the one hundred and forty properties because I'm not seeing it in my drive-in. Sorry if that's my error.
It's, I can, I can jump in here. So uh, we have it as a, as a zip file, all the one hundred and forty files. It's quite large and we're gonna post it to the Historic Commission's page uh tomorrow.
Very great.
That way.
And then I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
So as we, we talked about the possibility of a bylaw, if I recall, and I don't remember the year that it was when we were last discussing, I think it was two thousand and eighteen or nineteen, discussing the preservation bylaw. Um, the sticking point was notification of property owners. What's been done right now so that the property owners are aware that their property is on this list of one hundred and forty um, properties?
So actually, great question. And so I think now that the list is completed, it, it informs us to, to now go out and begin doing that work a bit more thoughtfully. Um, knowing that we have a, a, a set collection of properties to um reach out directly to these folks. If a preservation bylaw were explored, um, that would be one of the very first steps. So prior to that, in, in the earlier efforts at a preservation bylaw, um, it centered around homes that were a hundred years or older. Uh, and that effort to undertake connecting with all of those folks was really, really challenging. Um, there are hundreds and hundreds of homes throughout Shrewsbury that met that criteria. So now that this kind of is, is compressed down into a hundred and forty and we've accepted this inventory as our starting point, which the commission did at its um November meeting. Um, that's part of the work of the commission um in the coming year as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a couple. If there aren't any, so just to follow up, the um how far away are we on filling the additional data points? Who lived there? Who built it? It seems that we have identified the one hundred and forty-one properties. But what I'm not a hundred percent clear on is it possible now from the one forty-one, it's a starting point. Don't learn anything more. Half could drop off, but they passed the vetting through architectural means or other. How, and how long would that take, do you think?
That, that's a great question. Um, I guess I don't have a, a finite answer on that. Um, researching the historical background of that number of properties is um, it's a significant amount of work. So we do have some ideas uh around reaching out to homeowners to help us make that happen. Um, so the commission does have a um, a few ways that we're thinking about doing that to actually bring them on board to help us. Um, doing that ourselves would be a, a pretty, a mountain of a task. Um, so in part of our outreach and education uh throughout the town, that's what we're thinking is gonna expedite that a little bit. I, I don't wanna give you a, an exact date if it's six months or a year or two years, because I honestly, I think it will be an ongoing process that is really central to the work of the commission that's in a sense, never truly done. Um, we'll always be, be looking at these things.
Okay, thank you. I think for me, I think that will help inform next steps. The uh, what I did hear though, back at the library, I think it was twenty nineteen from a lot of the property owners, how property owners of, of at that point, property that was deemed historically significant. What I did hear from many of them was that if they're included as part of the process, that they were game, they were open to, receptive to it depending upon the, the shape and format. So that's something I think um that's out there, but it wasn't an absolute bar. I just think it will require a lot of conversations. And I know one of the recommendations is possibly looking at a preservation bylaw in the spring of twenty twenty-two or in May at the annual town meeting. We just may, it may be tough from a timing standpoint to be able to reach out to these folks and get them buy-in. But again, I mean, it, the, the conversations were very productive back then. It's just now looking and fine tuning that list and, and be able to think, explain the significance as well to get buy-in. But that's why as I'm thinking of next steps, I think right now is to digest a lot of this, take a look at that zip file, have an opportunity to ask more questions and take it under advisement today with the goal of revisiting this after we've had an opportunity to digest a lot of this, including the files and be able to ask more pointed questions on what's in there on the one hundred and forty-one property.
Sure, no, that's great feedback.
Mrs. Casamet.
Just thinking um about how we're entering into the strategic plan process and wondering if um if you, Mr. Chairman, think that historic preservation might be um a theme that comes out through the strategic plan and there might be an opportunity to further explore um our next steps once we understand better what the community has to say about historic preservation through the strategic planning process.
A great question, but as we're talking with these fellow residents in the community, I think, given that this is an absolute engagement process, I would expect to hear that. And then balancing um with Community Preservation Act as part of this, the uh preservation and um just getting feedback in back from the residents as we ag- engage in that active outreach to residents. Short answer is, I think, yes. In terms of what that shape is, I'm excited to find out over the next four to six months. That's the powerful thing about strategic planning, right? As we're going through this and it's the survey starting in January and then um active stakeholders and the excitement that I believe is in town hall and it will continue to permeate throughout the community. So I look forward to the feedback. Anything else? Okay, so I would suggest that we take this under advisement, have an opportunity to look at the zip file and, and take it up at a subsequent agenda item.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Much for having us.
Take care.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is under new business is to review and act on the outdoor dining rules and regulations and application form. If I could ask. This is last to briefly comment on that.
Sure, good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, as you may recall, um at town meeting this past year, um, the Planning Department and Planning Board, um and then subsequently Town Meeting uh voted to amend uh some of the use regulations related to dining uh and restaurant uses. And this was directly related to what we learned from the beginning of the pandemic and continue to learn through the pandemic that there really is a desire and a need and an ambiance of outdoor dining. And we wanted, uh, as staff, we wanted to limit the barriers for obtaining uh permits for outdoor dining in general, but still have a mechanism in which uh these outdoor areas were reviewed for um safety purposes such as barriers. Um, distance to roadways, uh noise and whatnot. And um we thought that the best way to do this was to prepare outdoor dining rules and regulations that would be held through the Board of Selectmen as you are also the licensing authority for alcohol and the majority of the restaurants that we have in town who would desire an outdoor dining would go through your board anyways to get that permitting. Um, so this evening, we have a draft document um related to outdoor dining that covers uh what door, what indoor and outdoor service means. Um, a fee that would be paid for uh having a restaurant have an outdoor dining um capabilities. What those hours of operations would be, the conditions of approval and the review by town staff for safety purposes and health purposes. Um, and we felt that this was the least barrier, least barrier for um restaurants, but also allowed the town of Shrewsbury to have a handle on what was actually going on with our outdoor dining and restaurant facilities. And in preparing this, we surveyed a variety of towns. And in preparing this, we surveyed a variety of towns and cities throughout Massachusetts to come up with this process. And would look for your feedback and eventually a, an adoption of these rules and regulations to move forward.
Thank you, any questions or comments? If there aren't any, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, John, were you going to say something?
I was a little confused, I thought I had just heard. His last say that we would vote this at a subsequent meeting, so perhaps I misheard.
I didn't want to put any pressure on the board, if you're ready to vote this evening, there is a review and act.
Right.
On the agenda, if not, we'd be happy to take any feedback and bring that back, so it's totally up to the board's comfort level.
What would you like to do? Yeah, Mr. DePaulo.
If we can hold it till the eleven.
Sure.
I, I would appreciate a couple of things that maybe. Like to discuss with this last offline, I think. We can do that, I would, that's not going to foul up the process for. Anybody who's going to open. Outdoor dining this, the next season, right? We wait till January?
Oh, muted.
I muted myself instead of unmuted myself. This state has provisions for outdoor dining through the end of April in accordance with the COVID guidance, so we do have. Sometimes it'd be happy to speak with you, Mr. DePaulo, and come back on your January eleventh meeting to discuss.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we'll take it up on January eleventh, thank you. Next item under new business is to review act and act on the twenty twenty two license renewals to include the following license types, alcohol, auto dealers, common victular, and common victular. At our last meeting on the fourteenth. We approved a vast majority of the twenty twenty two license renewal applications, there were few licensees at that time. Were not submitted the necessary documents as such, the renewals were held out for this meeting. There were a couple of restaurants that have since addressed outstanding items, there's one common victular license holder. That remains outstanding as well as for the alcohol license holders, there are five. Listed in front of us as well. That remain outstanding items in order to receive their certificate of inspection, so we have a list included. With several proponents for licenses. The Cafe Noir, Willie's, Jimmy's Tavern, Imperial Buffet, Thai Place, Buffalo Wild Wings. The request is that. We approve these license subject to compliance by December thirty first, twenty twenty one.
So moved.
Second, Mr. DePaulo.
Sorry, I did the same thing, yes, second.
I've been moving a second, a roll call voters required, Mr. LeBeau.
Hi.
Mr. DePaulo.
Hi.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Sammy, I, motion passes unanimously, thank you, next item under new business, to review and act on the four oh nine South Street Local Initiative Program Application. Letter of support for, from Gray Star Development. Mr. Last, if I could ask you to comment on that, please.
Absolutely, thank you, Chairman. At your. Meeting in November, there was a request for a presentation by Gray Star Development and their consultants to. Propose a. Affordable housing project for a hundred and ninety six units of over fifty five age restricted housing. Which would be a twenty five percent affordability under the chapter forty B law. And at that time, they were before you to request. That you support a local initiative. Program, application to the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state. Which is also a funding mechanism for affordable housing projects. And over the course of the past month and a half, we've been working with Gray Star and their consultants. On their draft lip application and other ancillary matters. And they are here before you this evening to ask for a letter of support and a signature on the lip application. That is the matter before you this evening, so I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, and there also are representatives from Gray Star and their consultant team. If the board has questions for them.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DePaulo.
Well. I guess I haven't, I haven't figured out how to keep a file open while we're. While we're doing virtual, but. What are we signing? I mean, are there terms in here, what? I can't, I can't access it right now, I thought I was going to be able to.
Sure, I can help with that, Mr. Sammy, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Sure, so in your Google Drive, and if you get to it, there is a lip application. And what it lays out are certain parameters for the project, and then there's a series of attachments that are also in your Google Drive. So the. Application states that this is for a housing project, a rental housing project that is age restricted. It'll be new construction, it's on the property at four oh nine South Street. It is for a hundred and ninety six units, a hundred and forty seven will be market rate, forty nine will be affordable. And it does speak to the unit prices of two thousand two hundred. Per unit market rate and one thousand two hundred and sixty one affordable per month. And then it goes into ancillary comments of who are the town contacts, who is the development team? And then other projects that this team has worked on related to affordable housing projects and so on and so forth. So those are the terms of the lip application.
So. If I, if I may. So why do we want to do this? What, what's our reason for doing this?
Would you like me to answer?
Yes, please, Mrs. Ross.
Sure, so currently the town does not have our ten percent threshold of affordable housing. The developer has come forth and would like to work with the town of Shrewsbury on an affordable housing project as they outlined at your November meeting. Or for an age restricted housing, and this also allows for greater availability of subsidy funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development. The Board of Selectmen entered into a similar agreement with Avalon Shrewsbury back in two thousand six for a lip project.
Right, but I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Jim, if I could, we, we did do that, but. There were other things involved in that. And it, it wasn't just us saying yes, it's a great idea, let's do it. Right? Is it lost?
So there were other items that came out of that, such as funds that Avalon Shrewsbury paid to. The town of Shrewsbury, I will note that. That we are on town staff, working with the developer on a development agreement on what the gives and takes would be on the project. But we have asked specifically for that not to be included as part of the lip application, as this is solely based upon the housing project as it is.
Can I ask another question, please?
Go ahead.
All right, so if this, if this was to go on. With the applicant. Without the town signing the lift. What, what, what does that mean? So lost.
So that would be what we would call in the terms of an unfriendly forty B. That the developer would go forward, apply to DHCD for a project eligibility letter, they would not have. Support from the town for the, the housing project. And the developer would just move forward of the process on their own and go right to the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
So. We, we're being asked to sign a lift without knowing what the other part is, what, what the benefit is to us, similar to Avalon. Is that, is that what we're being asked to do tonight? An open ended, just yes, we support it, and. How does the rest of it play in later on?
Mr. Mizakar, would you like to take that?
Thank you, so I, I mean. I, I'm, I guess I don't have a specific town ask or need at this point, the conversation with regards to. Development agreement is. In the area of improvements within the public domain, so infrastructure improvements. That would be required for this project, but have ancillary benefits likely to the overall system. We have not specifically asked Gray Star for any. Direct. Contribution back to the town. At this point. You know, we, we haven't engaged the board in, in that type of conversation, but I wasn't aware of there were any specific needs or asks that we are looking for. With regards to this.
Just a follow up question that I have related to that, so if we approve the application, but what does it bind us in terms of going forward? Besides supporting the application, you still have the development agreement, which is the. Overall binding agreement, right? What, what does this mean for us?
Really, it's not, it's not a terribly binding document, except that there's support and that the. Applicant would go forward with the zoning board of appeals with the Board of Selectmen's support.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. DePaulo.
I hate to be monopolizing this, but. Nothing I'm comfortable going forward with that, to be honest. I'm, I'm not, I understand the benefit of. Having affordable housing, you're not opposed to it. I, I just. I don't see why this can't run the course the way. Most of the other ones did. We don't support it, we don't oppose it. I guess that's where I am. I really need to be convinced on this to vote on this tonight. Or vote in favor of this.
Mr. Powers. Do you have a question or comment?
I have a comment, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Tom Powers from Powers Realty Development, project consultant with Gray Star. I would like to point out that we do have a team here, Chris Legashi is from here, from, from Gray Star. But to your point, Mr. DePaulo. The, the current subsidized housing inventory for the town of Shrewsbury is at approximately six point two percent. This project, which is a hundred and ninety six units, would, would be counted one hundred percent toward the inventory. Toward the subsidized housing inventory in the eyes of the Department of Housing, Housing and Community Development. And thereby raising the inventory to approximately seven point two percent. In addition, this project is a senior active adult development, fifty five plus, which. Provides the town with, with significant income revenue that the project is currently not, or the, or the land is not currently offering to the town. It's going to have a very insignificant traffic impact for local roads in the general vicinity of the project. And it's, it's going to be a huge benefit for the town in terms of senior housing. Additionally, we've been talking with, with the Department of Housing and Community Development. And those hundred and ninety six units will potentially provide the town with the benefit of, of, of being able to thwart. Forty Bs for the, for the next two years, because you are adding to your housing production plan in the eyes of the Department of Housing and Community Development. Therefore, you would not be exposed to a potential. A, a potential forty B, you know, conventional forty B where you would be, you know, it could be three hundred units, you know, two hundred and fifty units, three hundred units. Which would add, you know, potentially could add schoolchildren to the, to the, to the public school system, would add, generate considerably more traffic. And, you know, seniors as a general statement are not on the roads at, at, at peak traffic hours, so they're not adding to the traffic, so. There are, there are benefits to the, to the town of Shrewsbury. We believe, and these, these benefits are, 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 we, we think are valuable for the town, because. You're not, you're not putting significant impacts to the, to the town's infrastructure with a senior fifty five plus project versus a conventional forty B.
Mr. Legashi, sorry, see you in there.
Thank you, Chris Legatsky here from Gray Star, thank you for, for the time tonight amidst the very busy time of year. I, I, I just want to make sure that we're being very clear on, on exactly what it is that we're asking as part of this lip application. I, I'm certainly sensitive to. You know, perception, if, if, if it may exist out there, and I might be picking up on it, that we're looking for some sort of a fast track on the process or a full sign off of the project, and. And that's certainly not the case, so if I could, I'd, I'd like to volunteer the. Help of our Land Use Council, Karen Kepler, if, if Karen is on the line here, to maybe just run us quickly through what the rest of the process here looks like in terms of. What would be committed to with signing of this lip, lip application and where we would go from there before we get to a final comprehensive permit.
Sure, thank you, Chris, I'm Karen Kepler from Sullivan Minister. And I. The, the lip application is really the preliminary step in the process, and it's. An indication to DHCD that the town was supported generally of the project. When DHCD gets the application, they will review it and issue determination that basically the project, the site. Is eligible for this kind of a project, it is not an affordable per se of the development. It is a preliminary determination, the same as the issue what's called a project eligibility letter. And that just means that the, the site and the project are eligible. For ultimate inclusion in the subsidized housing inventory for the lip program. Lip is a form of subsidy, but just going through that process counts as the subsidy which entitles the units to be counted on. But the, the real meat of the process is still coming through the. Process with the zoning board of appeals. And that's when the forty B comprehensive permit application will be filed, the zoning board of appeals has the. Authority under chapter forty B to issue the permit, deny the permit. Or issue the permit with conditions, and it's in, it's in the. Conditioning section of what the zoning board of, the, the conditioning process, I guess, of what the zoning board of appeals would be doing. Where frequently. Developer contributions come up and are negotiated. In, at this early stage of the process, it's a little difficult to. Before the zoning board of appeals has truly determined what the project is going to look like, it is a little difficult to truly assess impacts and. Come up with a development agreement, which is why I think that that is, has been moving from the process at this point. But that doesn't mean that that issue, that those points wouldn't be revisited through the zoning board. The Board of Selectmen have the opportunity to make their comments or positions known through that process as well. So there, this is not, this is not the only bite of the apple, and in fact, it's really not the most needed bite of the apple, it is simply a, a, a statement that. General, the Board of Selectmen supports the apple.
Thank you, Mr. DePaulo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having been through these a few times, I, I understand everything. That was just said. Wouldn't this be? The same situation? With any forty B that comes in, with the exception of this being a fifty five and over. And the other one, another one possibly not. Anything that I just heard is something that happens through the process, whether we support it or not, unless I'm missing something.
Well, I think the hope is that by supporting the project, the project will move more quickly, there would be less. Time needed to work out. Major problems, that, that generally the support is, is an indication to the state that the town is behind the project. And that means a lot to the CD when they're reviewing the back.
Just a quick question in terms of process, I know when we talked in November, we. If my, my recollection is correct, that this was a rolling application process. Not sure where other members of the board are, but if we would want a little more time to think of it, what does January mean for your process?
I, I can take that, we, we are on a rolling basis here, we, we, we have been. I can take that. We, we are on a rolling basis here. We, we, we have been striving to get this application in front of the board for the year end, seeking approval as we laid out earlier in November. If, if the board is not prepared to vote on this tonight, you know, we, 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 we have time sensitivities on the overall project, but I want to be respectful of, of making sure that everyone has the ability to digest and fully understand here, and and if that means pushing this, this decision out to January, I think that that's something that we could accommodate.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, my memory of the November meeting was that the opponents requested that we were going to take this matter up for potential adoption at our, what was then planned to be the December 28th meeting. And I believe the question was asked about what happens if the board isn't comfortable in, at the December meeting, and I'm, my memory is that, you know, we heard that that was the request of the developers. But it was not necessary that we take the action tonight. I mean, that's my memory of, of, you know, of, I recall. And that was my expectation tonight, that we would have some discussion and determine if the board was comfortable or not with moving forward.
Thank you. So was it that desire of the board to push this out to January, have additional time to think about it? Ask any additional questions we have now? If any? Mr. DePaulo.
I, I, I think I'd like to have some more detailed discussions with Ms. Last and Mr. Mizakar about this. I, I I really need to understand why being neutral is a bad thing. But I can take that offline because if, if the rest of the board wants to vote, then fine, but I, I'm, I'm not ready.
I'm comfortable waiting to January.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Mrs. Flynn's electricity went out, and that's why she departed the meeting. She's trying to reconnect.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with, with waiting as Mr. DePaulo requests.
Me too. Mrs. Cassavan, you comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. So let's follow up with our due diligence. Any questions that we have? Mrs. Flynn is back. Thank you. The, so yeah, let's wait. We'll take it up in, in January. Let's get any additional questions we have answered. And we'll go through the town manager's office to subsequently take this up in January. We have meetings on the 11th and 25th, so we will take this up then. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for the time.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the Pointed Hills Farm Letter of Support to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Mrs. Last, if I can ask you to briefly comment on that, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, the Pointed Hills Farm is a 40B housing project located at 526 Hartford Turnpike. It was originally on this property and another property and had been pared down and approved at the zoning board of appeals in October of 2021. Subsequently, Wind Development has an option on this project and property. The original developer and property owner is Mr. St. Pierre. Wind Development was before the zoning board of appeals last evening for a meeting of non-substantial change items related to the project, increasing the number of units of the project by one, decreasing the number of bedrooms, slight changes to the parking areas and to the stormwater system, and they are before the Conservation Commission this evening with the related stormwater and parking improvements. Wind Development is looking to gather support from the town of Shrewsbury for their application to the Department of Housing and Community Development for low-income housing tax credits and a DHCD subsidy. As I stated before, the project was 93, 92 units. Now they're proposing 93 units. The manager and I have had many discussions with Wind Development about their proposal and project. And it is already approved by the zoning board of appeals for their comprehensive permit. So it's our recommendation this evening that you review and act on the letter of support to the Department of Housing and the Community Development.
And we have the proposed draft letter in form, plus her in our queue as well. Mr. DePaulo.
If I might ask, Ms. Last, this was, um, this was approved for the larger project, right? By the state?
What do you mean by the larger project?
When they, when they were gonna have the full project with 250 or whatever.
Yes, they received a project eligibility letter, then they received the comprehensive permit, and then it was, went back to the state and for approval. This is the pared down project.
No, I understand that, but it, it's already made it through the process, right? Once?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
This is purely for funding mechanisms for Department of Housing and Community Development and the developer.
And that, and that's it?
That is correct.
It sounds, that sounds kind of neutral, so I'm okay with that.
Can I just ask a quick technical question in light of the previous agenda item and the position that you can get a stay for 40B projects for a couple of years? Does this project help with that or no? What, or why, why wouldn't it, or would it impact subsequent projects, and if so, when?
Sure. So this does help with that. I just reviewed our housing production plan where it states that if we are to increase our housing production by 70 units, 7-0, we would be allowed to have a safe harbor for one year. If we were to increase our housing stock by 139 units, we'd have a stay for two years, and that's based upon the occupancy of the units, not based upon the permitting through the comprehensive permitting process.
And is it getting actual certificates of occupancy or getting the rooms themselves leased?
No, it's based upon the certificate of occupancy through the town.
Okay, thank you.
And then certifying those units with the state.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that. What would, what's the rule of the board on number 10? The request is to authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for Mass Department of Housing and Community Development.
Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with putting it to a vote. I move approval. That we authorized, excuse me, that we authorized the chair to sign the letter.
Second, movement second in a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Sammy, aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, before we go into executive session, is to review and act on renewal of intermunicipal agreement of animal, animal control, animal inspector services. As you recall, back on July 13th, we had extended the intermunicipal agreement by six months. At that time, historically, we've extended these for a year at a time, but my recollection is that Grafton and Westboro were still negotiating the terms of a new form of agreement. So at that time, we did it for six months. And negotiations continue. So the request is to, once again, do a six-month extension of the intermunicipal agreement, but between the three towns, under the same terms. Any questions or comments?
Move approval.
Second, movement second in a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Sammy, aye, motion passes unanimously. So that's it for items on the agenda. Before moving into executive session, I am seeking executive session for the following reasons. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property, the former Beale School, 1-7 Maple Avenue.
A move. We enter into executive session for that purpose.
Second, movement second in a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Sammy, aye. The board will now convene into executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value of real property. Furthermore, the board will not convene back into open session. So thank you for joining this evening. Wish you and your family healthy and happy holiday season and a prosperous new year. We'll see you on January 11th. Thank you.
So are we to leave this meeting and go to the other?